I'm not used to this yet. Welcome to our agenda meeting for May 11th. This is our first in-person agenda meeting and I welcome you all and it's been a year. We had an in-person meeting last week, a budget meeting, but this is our first agenda meeting. So pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cable Vision Channel 118 and Verizon FiOS Channel 24 and by filing such notice with the township clerk. The meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, May 11th. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that active recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered a private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, please.
Ms. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Calley?
Here.
Mr. De Prima?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Silikowski?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Quorum exists.
All right, can we all stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and just before we move on, just wanted to explain a few things. Number one, we did say that this would be on YouTube Live tonight, but there is some more technical difficulties that our technical team is having, so they are filming it and it will be on YouTube tomorrow. Yes, it will be on YouTube tomorrow, so you'll be able to see the meeting. Well, for the people out there, you'll be watching this tomorrow and so there's that. And again, I just wanted to just explain because it's been a year really since we've been in in-person meetings. So this is the agenda meeting and a lot of time, I think on the Zoom meetings, it might have been a little hard to distinguish between the agenda meeting and the regular meeting. And so I just wanted to explain what an agenda meeting is. It's more of a working meeting. We are taking formal action on some action items, payment of bills and whatever, but basically we're just here to review the agenda and have conversations about, you know, should things stay on the agenda, should they be removed, whatever, administratively removed. So that's what this meeting is about. It kind of looks a little bit more formal because we're on the stage. A lot of times we're in the conference room and we're a little bit more informal, sitting around the conference room table, but due to COVID restrictions, we are on the stage here tonight. So I just wanted to kind of give everyone a synopsis of that because I thought it was important because, again, it's been a year. So as we move on, we're just going to go through the agenda and if anybody has any questions, you know, any of the Board members have any questions or want to have any discussion. We have the approval of the minutes. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at the minutes yet. Oh, thank you. Do you need a volunteer for the Code of Ethics Corner for next week? Who would like to read that? Any Board member?
I'll do it. Jill.
Who's that?
Me.
Sorry.
Calley will do it.
Mrs. Calley, okay, thank you. Okay, all right. Now, so approval of minutes. Now, we will have a report of the student representative to the Board, Mr. Dan Rita. He will be here next week. Recognition, next week's going to be really, you know, one of my favorite meetings of the year. We do our Teacher of the Year recognition awards, so that will happen next week. Does anybody have any comments or anything that they want to say regarding any of that?
Are we having all of the teachers at the same time?
We have sent invitations out to the teachers. It's not mandatory for them to come, so they're going to RSVP us with the intended family guests that they intend to bring, so we can work out the social distancing within the auditorium.
Okay. And, all right, and so superintendent's report.
Traditionally, we don't do superintendent's report on the day of the teacher recognition because it should be about them and they are the heart of our district. So we're going to focus on that and then with the Board's pleasure, I plan to have recognition of students at the June agenda meeting and at the June regular meeting, just because there's so many students that I, and groups that I want to recognize after we've been through such a different year and a difficult year. And I think a lot of students have persevered and demonstrated tremendous acquirement of skills and recognition through even National Honor Society and so forth. So we're going to try to do as much of that as we can as possible in the two meetings without bringing it to the level where it's crowded in here and we're having people too close.
Right.
So I will work on that in details, but just be prepared, as a Board, we'll have recognition at the agenda and at the regular meeting.
Okay, you're just going to kind of split them up?
Yes.
Right. As you're saying that, I was thinking, because we didn't have, the county canceled the Unfun Heroes.
Yes, they made that remote as well, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so this would be nice to recognize some students. All right. Any correspond, will we have any correspondence that you know of right now? And will there be any special committee reports?
Madam President?
Yes.
Yes, we're going to have a finance, buildings and grounds and transportation meeting on Thursday evening at 7:00 PM. It will be a Zoom meeting and we will be discussing a few different items specifically relating to indoor air quality, ionization, filterization, things of that nature for the HVAC systems. I know that was a big topic at the budget meeting last week and we will have a meeting. We're going to have our team there, including, I believe, a specialist who deals with this, who can explain how this situation does work and how it's going to improve the air quality within our buildings. So if there's any issues or concerns out there in the public, they should be able to join the Zoom meeting and watch and see exactly what we're going to discuss so that a lot of the questions can be answered and they can educate themselves. Obviously, there were some comments that we're not doing enough, but since we are getting additional monies from the federal government through the CARES Act, we are going to utilize that to improve the air quality. So please, if you have questions or concerns, join us and you'll be able to hear firsthand what we're going to be doing for September. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anything else? I can't read them. I'm trying to-
Yes, we will have a committee meeting, curriculum. I'm going to put Dr. Tuohy on the spot as he was asked last, I guess last week, to go over the summer program.
Okay. All right. Mr. Tuohy's good at that. Dr. Tuohy, sorry. Sorry. Okay, so at this time, we are going to have a hearing of the residents on agenda items only and action items only. So, you know, typically, I don't, this doesn't have to be read, but I'm going to read the requirements for hearing of the residents. I just feel we need a little bit of, we need it reiterated. So I'm going to, so please bear with me, I'm going to just read it. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board will set aside time during two sections of every public meeting for comments from the public. The first section will take place prior to the presentation of agenda items for the Board's consideration and vote and will be limited to comments on items listed for action tonight. The second section will take place immediately prior to the good of the order and adjournment and may include comments on any school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. The Board encourages questions, feedback, and viewpoints. School boards are strengthened by diversity of viewpoints to foster dialogue in a spirit of school community partnership that builds effective policy and problem solving. The provisions of Board Bylaw 0167 shall be strictly enforced with regard to public comments. All public comments shall be directed to the Board President, who may refer issues to administrators, committee chairs, or the Board's attorney. In advance of the public meeting, the Board shall allow public comments to be submitted to the Board Secretary by electronic mail and in written letter form to boardsecretary@obps.org to include your name and address by 12:00 PM on the date of the meeting. The total time for each participant shall be five minutes, during which time, a member of the public may speak on as many items as he or she chooses. No member of the public may give their time to another participant. Respectful disagreement is expected and respected. However, the Board President reserves the right to interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statements when the statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant to an item on the meeting's action agenda. The Board President also reserves the right to request an individual to leave the meeting to enlist the assistance of law enforcement and/or to call for a recessive adjournment of the meeting when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such action. So I just wanted to read that so that everybody understands the rules and expectations set forth. So, that being said, is there anyone that would like to speak on agenda items only? Okay, seeing no one?
So, Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
And Mr. Porton, so there were three emails that I did receive today in a timely fashion. Should I read them at this time or at the end of the meeting?
Can you determine whether they are on items that are listed for action tonight or not?
I believe they're not.
Then let's read them at the second portion.
Okay.
Okay, so we did receive some emails and they will be read at the second portion of the hearing of the residents. Okay. Any comments from the Board? Anything? No good, okay. Speak up and, you know, you don't have to wait for me to ask. Anything on policy? Does any, did anyone have any question on policy? It's present for, going to be presenting for a second reading?
Yeah, the only thing that I would like is, could I get a complete list of the full policies rather than this cryptic list that we have? I'd be happy to pick it up at the office.
It should be in your packet.
Right, and you did not get an email of all the detailed policies?
I may have missed it. I'll check.
Yeah.
If I don't have it, I'll let you know, Jill.
Okay.
Yeah, the Board did receive, I know I did. Yeah, the Board did receive-
No, I don't remember this one. I had a problem with my printer, too. Okay.
Okay, so just to clarify to the public, the Board did receive an explanation of all the policies. So, okay, anybody else, does anybody have any question on the specific policies?
There's a, Mr. Weber, do you need mine? It's in the packet. It's in your packet.
Great, thank you.
You found it?
Yes, I did. My printer went out, so.
Okay.
It's got COVID.
All right, so seeing no questions about any policy that we can have Mr. Porton clarify, everybody's good with it. Let's move on to curriculum, professional development. Anybody have any question about anything there? And, okay, we have athletics here, there's nothing under it. Does that mean?
We don't anticipate any motions under athletics.
Okay. All right, finance? And I believe we are going to need a motion on finance items one and two.
Calley will move.
I'll second.
Ms. Ellis Foster, second, thank you. Any discussion on finance items one and two?
Mr. Carroll, may I just clarify why item number two was there for voting?
Sure. Yes.
This was a security grant that was awarded to the district during fiscal 1920. We were required to, I won't go into the specifics as to what the security upgrades were, but we were required to submit our security upgrades to the state, get approval for them. We did. Then we were required to submit a application for the grant funding, which we did, and it was approved in September. And in the last, and this work has been done and it's been paid for, and within the last two weeks, we received final approval from the state on this project so that we can now begin requesting reimbursement of those funds. So I wanted to approve it tonight so we can get on reimbursement prior to June 30th so we don't have to carry it over until next year.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about, what is it, items three through 14? No? Okay. Non-certificated personnel office, we have items one through five.
And next week, I know there's a number, next week everything will be filled in, right? I know that we have a number of things that are blank for salaries, those will all be in next week, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Non-certificated personnel operational? And non-certificated personnel other. There's a lot of stuff there. One through nine. All right, moving on to certificated personnel. Okay, and we do have an item on the agenda for action. I'm going to need a motion to move item number one under certificated personnel.
Dunn will move item number one under certificated personnel, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Can I have a second?
Burns will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Any discussion? All right, can I have a roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one pass.
Okay. Certificated personnel items two through, I don't know what.
Forty-two.
Two through forty-two, this is a long one. Anybody have any questions? Items two through forty-two. Yeah, and again, there's blanks that will be filled in.
We are updating them daily. I can tell you that even number four, the new hires, will be updated and all our summer programs, the staff.
Okay. All right. Non-certificated personnel transportation, we have one through seven. Any questions, any concerns, any discussion? And we have, I'm taking that as a no. We have supplies, equipment, and services, and we have another action item there. We have, I need a motion for supplies, equipment, and services, item number one. Mr. Weber, can I have a second?
Calley will second.
Ms. Calley. Any discussion?
Again, Mr. Carroll, this is on the agenda for voting so we can move expeditiously to have this building demolished. It's a hazard and this township has determined that it should be destroyed.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, seeing no further discussion, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Upstand.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber? Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one and two pass. I'm sorry, resolution.
Madam Chairperson, in a little bit of hindsight, do we have something replacing the lost storage in the works?
This building hasn't been used for years.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
Okay.
Resolution one passes.
Okay, good. All right, so we have items two, two through four. Any other discussion on supplies, equipment, services, two, three, and four? Okay, now we're on transportation. We have items one through 12. Anybody have any questions or concerns? And what about miscellaneous? Items one through, what is it, one through five? All the committee people are correct in the committee attendees. Everybody check their names? Okay. And we have our next board meetings, June 22nd and June 29th, which, as Mr. Sidino said, we're going to do some student recognition, which is very exciting. All right. We have no Board Secretary or Board Business? Okay.
Excuse me, Jill?
Yes?
I'm sorry, on the meetings, isn't recognition next week, not June?
No, 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 teacher recognition is next week, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, Mr. Sidino had mentioned in June, we're going to be doing some student recognition. Yeah, okay. Okay, that brings us to the hearing of the residents on any school district issue. Anyone from the audience can get up and speak. I'm not going to read the, I'm not going to read the blurb again, but what I read before applies to this section as well. Right, right up here.
Hi, Amber Miller. Just had a couple of questions. Coming here, I wanted to talk about the end of the school year, but then I kind of changed my mind because there's only a month left and thinking about what I want to say that will be purposeful, I'm thinking about the fall would be much more important to talk about. So I was just wondering, and I haven't been up to date on any of the last meetings because I haven't been able to catch up, but looking to the fall, is a full-day school going to be a definite 100% option starting in September? Also, my other question would be mask-wearing, CDC recommendations. Is it possible to lighten the restrictions with the six-foot distance, three-foot mask-wearing for our students? And the reason I ask is that I just want to talk out of common sense and, you know, this last year's been very difficult and nobody wants to be a Monday morning quarterback. We've all made mistakes, maybe the administration of the Board thinks that they haven't, but nobody's perfect. So just thinking to the fall, I just, as a parent, want everyone to think about the extracurricular activities that are going on in town. You know, my daughter, my sons, they can't sit next to their students, they can't, their peers, they can't hug them, they can't touch them, but after school, they're playing sports with them without a mask. It just doesn't really make sense. And some of the pictures, actually, my Facebook feed popped up today from Mother's Day tees from years ago, and the kids are hugging and dancing and smiling and kind of brought tears to my eyes just thinking that, you know, Glenn School, they were doing Mother's Day tees and the kids were hugging and taking pictures and we just haven't been able to do that. So just thinking about the fall, I just would love the Board Administration to think about what goes on outside of school. I know COVID is a real thing. I had it myself, my husband had it, I worked with it. But the numbers are down and regardless of what the numbers look like in September, just think about and look around at what life looks like because, you know, we're wearing masks here, but if I was to take Mr. Dunn out for a drink at Grillstone, we'd be sitting without plexiglass, without masks. Just doesn't really make sense to me. And I just feel like my kids, I know, especially the wearing the mask, not being able to hug and touch their friends, asking when COVID's going to be over daily, it's just, it's hard. You know, I keep my kids busy doing what I need to do to keep their mental stability and their happiness going, but school's such a big part of their lives and I would love for in the fall, for there to be no masks. Three foot, one foot, you know, I would love to see them eat lunch in the lunch tables. You know, I know that is probably a thought and everybody has to think about what the numbers look like in September. Outside seating, I know like about three board meetings ago, I had suggested tents and outdoor lunch tables, maybe for snacks, you know, that hasn't happened, but maybe it would happen in the fall. But just whatever the committee looks like and whatever the committee discusses for the fall, I just want everyone to please take a look at the community as a whole and how we're living our lives, not just school. Because outside of school, we are living our lives, we're having birthday parties, the kids are getting back to normal, the football team, the cheerleading team, the swim team, Special Olympics is going on, everything's getting back to normal. So for everything that my child is not doing in school, they're doing as soon as the school day ends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. What we're going to do is we're going to have, I see more people that are commenting, so we're going to take all of the comments and then we'll address everything at the end, okay? Okay. Yep, whoever's next, come on. I can't see, so. I see a shadow.
Hi, everybody. My name is Diane Michael. I am the parent of two children in District. Over the course of this pandemic, my family went through a severely hard time with a disabled child who relies on in-person schooling for not only academics, but therapies that support her basic functions of life. Remote was so hard in my house, lots of tears. Thank God for my daughter's teacher and team. The growth and learning curve of my team this year was incredible. My daughter wasn't successful in therapies. Therapy's essential for her progress in life. I am grateful to Dr. Tuohy and Dr. Lombardi that helped me and my multi-disabled class get through it this year. It was a pandemic. Anxiety peaked, new diagnosis were handed to us, new medications were administered. My daughter was born with a partial lung and more pneumonias than I can count. Respiratory virus and my family have a special relationship. My kids went back to school every time they opened. I supported this. My kids will go back full-time when that happens. I also support this. I will ask questions and I will support that process just as I have done thus far. All children need school. Excuse me. I believe every member on this stage has best intentions and I- I believe every member on this stage has best intentions and I have gotten to know them over the years, attending every meeting possible, from Board of Ed meetings, curriculum meetings, PTAs, President's Council, SEPTA, pandemic response meetings and Re-Entry Task Force. I read Department of Health guidelines, CDC guidelines and probably too many articles by every organization out there. I ask questions, obtain facts, I do not go straight to social media. I go straight to someone usually on this stage or within my kids' schools, and I don't care how many times I have to do that. I'm a frequent flyer of many medical facilities in the tri-state area, but most importantly, I'm tired. I have worked with, and yes, again, sorry, the Board of Ed and administration, I give you all kudos for choosing to work with me even when you know I'm going to bring some hard challenges, opinions, emotions and demands to the table. I am no stranger to advocating in this auditorium, or any room for that matter, we always get through it. You all hear my voice regardless and I appreciate it even when I drain you. I have made strong relationships with parents, students, teachers, Board of Ed, administration, parish staff, I listen to all sides. Every survey was 50/50, it was crazy, every survey was 50/50. If you think your side is majority or the winning side, you are mistaken, and by the way, there were no winners. Task force hasn't been easy. I feel it was a fair playing field with all members involved, which is why meetings sometimes go three hours long. We all have the same goal and love, and a love for all of our kids. Again, it's my opinion, I'm entitled to it because I was there as a parent for every single meeting. I speak my mind and I have no regrets either way, not one single meeting has been easy. But you know who hasn't made it easy? Governor Murphy, the CDC, ever-changing guidelines of the Department of Health, schools being overlooked and unassisted, that made it pretty hard. In response to masks, I have personally, or one of my friends personally consulted with the following as our medical in-needs, in-person needs still continued. We have consulted personally with Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, pulmonary, cardiology, ophthalmology, neurology, local pediatricians, local...
Go ahead, yeah.
Should I hurry?
You have a minute.
Okay, we have consulted with hospitals far and wide. I'm not here to run circles around this highly debatable subject. My point is, we all have strong views, but your view don't trump my view and my view doesn't trump yours. If it provides any level of kicking this pandemic's butt, I would gladly choose the better of two evils. My daughter has respiratory disease with partial lung, wears a mask and goes to school. Thank you to everyone who protects her health and her rightful place in this district. In closing, please?
Yes, absolutely.
I just want to thank administration, going back to last week in the Board of Ed because I didn't have a chance, but thank you for finding ways to not cut programs this year or coming year. Thank you for keeping staff intact. Thank you for trying to move forward fluidly out of this pandemic and unfortunate budget cut. Thank you for starting a multi-disabled program at SOC. Thank you for creating new learning tools for special education. Thank you for supporting We Are One, we were able to make a difference and give five scholarships to high school seniors this year because of all the peril that you've brought. Thank you for installing communication boards throughout the district. Thank you for throwing positive activities in every chance you could. I refuse to not recognize triumphs. Our kids are back and they are resilient and they are doing some pretty incredible things. I also appreciate the parents in this room for advocating, even if we have different views. I will continue to show up and learn, not with my boxing gloves, but with my notebook. I don't always understand, but I try my hardest to learn. For heaven's sake, it's time to put down your armor and find a new way of communicating and building relationships for the sake of our children and our township. It's a pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Michael.
Teresa Mangum. Good evening, my name is Teresa and I'm the parent of a remote 11th and 8th grader and an in-person 1st grader. Now, my older two are still remote by their choice. They are old enough to decide they have done excellently while remote and in-person either way. I trust and respect their decisions. On other hands, my 1st grader was going back, was going back as soon as we got the chance. She, like others, did not respond well to remote learning. She started out okay last year in a remote kindergarten setting, but then again, she had Mrs. Latano, and if anyone knows her, they know why. Keeping it short, she is the most patient, caring and dedicated teacher that I know in my almost 12 years in the district. Moving on to 1st grade, my daughter also got a wonderful teacher. At first, she did well with remote learning, but around December, January, we hit a wall. She wanted nothing to do with the computer. I eventually got the mean comments from my daughter. She hates me, I'm the worst mother, she doesn't love me anymore. But my husband kept telling me, you know she doesn't mean it. Sure enough, after school was done, she was back to loving me. I even started with the idea of sending video of proof of our horrific days to our superintendent and board members to show firsthand why the kids needed to be returned to school. Instead, I decided to come up with a plan with her teacher to remedy the situation, and so we did and continued on. Once they opened after spring break, she was back in school focusing on the future, and can I tell you, she bounced back so fast. Kids are resilient. Yeah, she definitely missed out on education, but I have no doubt she'll catch up, thanks to Mrs. Reagan over at McDivitt, she has done a great job with our students. To the parents who are fighting back to be in school, out of about 7,000 students in the district, only a fraction are back in school. Where are you all now that we are back five days? And I hear there are lots still upset about parents, about wearing, the kids wearing the masks. I get it and I respect it, but I honestly feel at this point, we have little more than a month of school left. Do you really want to take a chance on anyone getting sick and risking yours or their summer vacations, graduations or problems? Let's focus on the road ahead. What's going to come September 2021? Will our children be in school full day and maskless? That's what I'm hoping, that's my focus right now. I know some of you think that the pandemic is over and that some don't think so. All I know is that there is something out there that is making others sick and causing some to die. Personally, I am lucky to only know one person who passed from the virus, but that's one too many. I know quite a few who battled it and couldn't believe I better hit them. If my daughter has to wear a mask throughout her school year, then so be it. If it prevents any possibility of spreading them, I'm okay with it, because we don't know who the other students or staff we're returning home to, elderly parents, family with cancer or other diseases. We are so quick to attack our superintendent and our board. I get it, you're not willing to be happy with their choices, and I honestly didn't vote for some of you, but I respect you and your job. Majority voted you in. Old Bridge, if you're not happy with them, then go ahead, run for board next term or make sure you vote, but until then, respect them as you like them to respect you. Our children are watching us and learning, especially the high schoolers. And for our superintendent, Mr. Sittidino, I don't envy his job one bit. He has to make choices from 8,000 students, so clearly there'll be some unhappy choice, unhappy parents out there. Every decision he makes, I may not agree with that, but I trust that he's putting our children's best interests first. That is what's most important, we can all agree to that.
Thank you.
Always a positive, I have to.
Yeah, you did it, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening to the superintendent, Mr. Sittidino, the Board of Ed, all our teachers and residents that may be watching. I have a brief statement.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, can you just say identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Michelle Mann.
Okay.
That was my next sentence.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have a brief statement and then I have a question that is from another person that they asked me to read. Okay, so my name is Michelle Mann and I have lived in Old Bridge for 14 years. I have two sons in the district, my oldest son is in 10th grade at the high school and my youngest son is in 4th grade at Memorial School. My oldest son is on the autism spectrum and my youngest usually qualifies for the wonderful extra help programs we have here in Old Bridge. To say that the 2021 school year has been a challenge would be an understatement. I won't bore you with all the details, but both my children struggled and faced many, many challenges. My husband and I had to adjust our work schedules and make difficult financial decisions. It has not been easy, but as a family, we did what we had to do. I think we can all agree, we want our kids back in school five full days a week in a safe environment. I genuinely believe Mr. Sittidino and the Board of Ed have acted in our children's best interests. I'm standing here tonight to say thank you and to show my support. I cannot imagine the planning and coordinating it took to get our kids back in school. I'd like to also say a special thank you to all the teachers. Anytime I had a problem or my kids were struggling, any teacher that I reached out for my 10th grader and my 4th grader went above and beyond to help my children and my family. I know there has been a lot of noise and accusations going around. Personally, I find it distasteful that a group of parents would turn what is a sad and difficult situation for both students and parents into some kind of political anti-mask conspiracy. Again, I just wanted to reiterate that I'm here to show my support and to thank you all for your hard work. My hope is going forward that both parents, that we can put whatever differences we have aside and we work together along with the Board of Ed to do what is best for the children of Old Bridge. Thank you for your time. All right, now here's a long-worded question. The question is from Matt Morgan and this is his question. He says, since we are paying $1 million in capital expenditures during the 2021, 2022 school year to rehab Lombardi Field and Track, this is a widely-used facility year-round, not just by schools, but also by residents for exercise and recreation. He is wondering if the town has offered at all to help pay a share to keep up with the upkeep of this facility, especially given that the school budget is extremely tight while we address, while we adjust to the new state aid formula and have to absorb millions in cuts each year. Did y'all get that? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Serge Lehens and I have two questions. My first question regards to before and after care. I know doubt topic was touched last week, some parents were asking questions about it, but I just want just some clarification or confirmation about if you guys, if the Board or Mr. Sittidino yourself would be in touch with township to see if that's going to happen in September or not, you know? My other question, I guess, pertains more to Mr. Mayor about the vendor bill list. We're looking, I was looking at it, I just want clarification on like the solar, the solar panels. I see that there was a, is that a total charge? The total cost of a charge for the electric or is that like, I saw that like six schools are up there? Or is that a charge of having the solar panels on the schools themselves? Just looking for clarification on that, because I just saw, I saw the total vendor cost and I just was wondering what that is exactly.
Okay.
That's it.
Is that it? Okay, thank you, yeah. If, if we have no other, I don't see anyone else coming to speak, so at this time, I will end the hearing of the residents and maybe Mr. Sittidino, you can, do you have any clarification or answers? And then Mr. Mayor, you want to go first?
Well, no, I have the emails that were sent to the board secretary.
I'm sorry, I forgot, yes, I apologize.
So the first, first email is from Ms. Gillian Johnson. The email reads, and that's quote, "My name is Gillian Johnson, I have two children who attend Old Bridge High School. I live at 24 Merritt Terrace in Merritt Estates and would like to request a traffic light be installed on 516 and Portraits Road. My children and many others from the neighborhood would appreciate a safe way for our Holstein to cross, 516 to get to school and to Geik Park. Not sure if this is the right form for this request, so please give me guidance if not. Please consider this request as a safety issue for young adults that live in Old Bridge." The second comment is from Ms. Katie Martin of Old Bridge. She's not provided her address. It's a lengthy comment, but then in a follow-up email, she asked to retract her communication to the board because her daughter would be presenting her letter at this meeting. So her daughter did not present the letter at the meeting, so it's your will. She retracted the statement, but she qualified the retraction by saying that her daughter would read the letter at the meeting, but her daughter's not here, so should I just read her original letter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because she's, the way she presented it, yeah.
Let me begin by thanking the Board of Ed and administration for all they have done working tirelessly and thanklessly during this pandemic. Because of you, our children have remained safe and healthy. I also want to remind everyone that the Board, the Board of Ed are volunteer positions, so all the time, effort and dedication of this board should be acknowledged whether you agree with them or not. What I witnessed at last week's board meeting is disgusting. Clearly, the 10 or so people who came to speak have no sense of common decency when it comes to public forums. Yelling and screaming across the room like children throwing tantrums because they did not get their way. In addition, there were children present witnessing it, not to mention the high schoolers. I am not disagreeing with anybody's right to speak, nor am I going to comment on their opinions. Whether we agree or not, it is everyone's right to speak and it is something that should be encouraged. However, once people have commented to scream across the auditorium and carry on like children is unnecessary. I would like to know where these people were two years ago when the budget needed to be cut and Paris and after-school busing were ready to be eliminated. That would have been far more detrimental to far more students, but it didn't affect them directly, so why care? The snack thing by the curb is just amazingly ignorant. To take pictures of other people's children, whether your own is in it or not, or whether their faces are blurred or not, is enraging. These photos were sent to a radio station, posted on social media, and that crosses the line. This is a complete invasion of privacy and I hope that the parents of the children photographs will press charges. As for people speaking about it when they are homeschooling their children anyway, your thoughts are a moot point. Why comment when your child is not even in school? Lastly, I think some people forget that they are not living in Monmouth County. They may want to be, but they aren't. The comparisons made to Marlborough, Manalapan, even Matteawan are laughable. We are Middlesex County, whether you like it or not. Take a look at Middlesex County schools and then please enlighten us which are full days with no masks. I am truly ashamed that our town is being perceived in such a way. How about the positive things that are happening? Smiles of children coming out of school every day, the initiative that We Are One and the Kindness Challenge. Let's start focusing on the good. There are only five and a half weeks of school left. Let's keep our children in a routine which they so rightly deserve and go forward as mentioned by the administration in September. Katie Martin of Old Bridge.
Was that all three?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, the third one was a retraction that some agreed for.
Right, okay, okay, so Mr. Sittidino.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to give it back to Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, can you talk about the topic related to the solar question? And you may not have the answer to that question at this time, but if you, you know, if you don't, then obviously you can get back to the gentleman and then follow up that one with the question from Mr. Matt Morgan as whether the township offered to provide any finances for the upgrades at Lombardi Field.
On, on the bill list, the solar, the solar bills, what, I believe seven of our buildings have solar panels on them and the energy that is generated from those solar panels are gen- are generated from, through another company that owns the solar panels. We do not own the solar panels, so we pay a reduced rate for that electricity that we use from those solar panels, which is approximately one-third of what we pay Jersey Central Power and Light and Public Service Gas and Electric. So those payments are to a vendor who is supplying the solar energy through the solar panels. We do not own the solar panels. What we've done is we've leased our roofs to an outside vendor to put the solar panels there. We did not pay to have the solar panels installed. In terms of the Lombardi Field project, we did not request assistance from the township for the renovation of Lombardi Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. I believe there was a question related to before and after care in 2021-22. As I stated last week, the township fully intends on having before and after care available to the families of Old Bridge in 2021-22. In my conversation with the Director of Recreation, he said it is a very important program to the township and to him, and that it'll be taking place in 2021-22. I believe all the other questions or comments were from Ms. Miller. First of all, Happy Nurses Day. I know that was next week for you, for all of our in-school district nurses. It is this week, Wednesday. September of 2021, it is our budget, is our intention, it is our plan to have full day, five days a week of instruction. Again, whether students are wearing masks or not, it's like anything else, and I don't understand the public's view that I have the will to change that. It is a mask mandate under executive order that we are all under with the governor's office, and if I said to everyone, "Hey, I don't believe in masks, stop wearing masks," my assistant would have the ethical responsibility to then enforce the law that is in place in New Jersey. Whether or not bars or restaurants, you can sit at a bar and restaurant and eat or drink with Mr. Dunn is irrelevant to the guidelines that are in for schools. The guidelines have changed, and the guidance has changed every month. There's new directives. But what has not changed for that level was schools. In schools, you still need six feet of distance to take off your mask to eat inside. So that becomes quite an obstacle in trying to do that with all of our students in our schools, to have space enough to separate them. And if we, now that we have, I think of close to 65% capacity with our elementary classrooms and students back, many of them at full capacity, it only allows us to have the three-foot. We couldn't even do it in the classrooms because we'd never spaced them out back to six feet so to take their masks off and to do it in that situation. So we have procedures in place that we're planning for, for having that for next year. I want everybody to remember that this current budget that we are operating and we've gained funds from in the 2020-21 school year begins in October of 2019. That's when we begin it. We adopted in, I think we adopted like the month after COVID began, in April of last, of 2020. So, you know, to say, and when we start planning for what we need in October of 2019, COVID wasn't even, you know, a headline coming out of China at that time. So now we have, you know, we've used grant money, we've used budgeted money to plan for next year. That begins on July 1st, the 2021, the 21-22 budget begins operation on July 1st. And we have plans in place for some of our after extended-year programs. There'll be tents, there'll be extended seating areas, there'll be dividers around, and so forth to make that happen. Again, wherever you sit on the mask, I, you know, I would love to say that I, you know, that everyone would love to learn without a mask, I'm sure. I would love to sit here without a mask on. This is not my favorite look. But I also say, you know, I know, you know, I've been to your place of work recently, and everyone's wearing a mask. Soon as you walk in the door, the security guard's got a mask, you know? Two years ago, the security guard didn't have a mask, and if the security guard showed up tomorrow without a mask on, they tell him to go home, and he's no longer going to work there. It's the directives that we get from the governor, and like I said, if I don't follow them, my second person better follow them, because if I'm not following the law, then I'm breaking my oath as the superintendent and what I'm supposed to do to protect this Board and to protect the students and the staff of this district. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think that covers everything. I just wanted to thank everyone who spoke tonight. Your words mean a lot. Does anyone, okay, does anyone have anything to say before we get to old business? Does anyone have any comments?
Can I just add something, Mr. DeCaro?
Uh, yes, Mr. DeCaro.
Just to reiterate what you just said, whoever, it's hard to see who's still here, but whoever spoke tonight, thank you, really, thank you.
Turn your mic on, Mr. Weber.
The question raised by Matt Morgan needs, I think, a little clarification, and I would ask Joe to double-check the number I'm going to throw out. It's my belief, I was on the Board at the time, that when Lombardi Field was renovated totally and redone, $600,000, I believe minimally, came from the township for that purpose. So it's not as if the township has not contributed to the success and the use of the track they have.
Oh, if my answer was an implication that the township did something wrong, that wasn't my intention. We did not, we did not seek, no, but we did not seek support for this project from the township. We had the funds available to do it ourselves.
Mike. Mike.
Yeah, I can confirm that the township did contribute $600,000 towards the Lombardi project in its initial phase.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Dunn.
I want to sincerely thank everyone who came out tonight and recognize the value and contributions of the administration and the Board. As I mentioned last week, when we had a ruckus group here, you know, it is our civic duty to do what's in the best interest of this town and our students, and we will continue to do that regardless of the facts. You know, there's been disagreement on this Board, there's been disagreement behind the scenes, but we do stick together and stand together as one because we know that we must stay unified to ensure that the education and the enrichment is there for our children. I'll say it again, if you feel that any of the Board members aren't doing a just job, come July, you will have the opportunity to fill out a petition to run for the Board of Ed. It is a volunteer's position. We do not compensate it for it. This is our time, and we do it out of our goodness of our hearts for what we think is best for our town and our students. So like I mentioned to the group last week, I'll mention to this group, if you feel that we aren't doing a good job, you have the right as an American citizen, as a citizen of Old Bridge, to run for the Board of Education and bring your thought process and your will to the Board, because that's what it's all about. We all have the possibility to run for elected office, and if you feel that you can make a difference, then do so. That's your right, and we encourage that. We all do what we think is best, and we will continue to do that regardless if we get criticized or praised. We're here for one purpose, and that's to ensure the education of our children. So again, July, the petitions will be available at the county clerk's office. If you feel you can contribute and make, you know, a difference, absolutely, there's three positions that are open. Please, run for the Board, and you can see how difficult it is. You'll know the difference, and you'll understand what's going on behind the scenes so you make an educated decision. Thank you again for your help and your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Would anyone else like to speak?
Are we doing old business, new business?
No, I'm going, I just wanted to, no, we're moving on to that next. Sorry. I just wanted to know if anyone wanted to speak regarding the comments. So if not, we can then move on to new bit, old business, Mrs. Kelly, if you had any. Does anybody have any old business? Anybody have any new? Mrs. Kelly, did you have?
New business is what we discussed, to do it under new business.
Yeah, I had some old business.
You have old business?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Giordano?
Well, first of all, I'd like to apologize for not being at the budget meeting last week, but in terms of the budget, I was against the Lombardi renovations, just considering what our students have been going in this past year. I thought it was inappropriate that the educational needs of the students weren't fully met before we started spending money on non-educational expenditures, and that's it. And we'll, I'll support the budget, and, you know, we'll see how it goes, and hopefully we'll be back to normal by September.
Okay. Okay, all right. So now on to new business. Mrs. Kelly, I believe you told me you had something?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. So last week at the budget meeting, a few of us, anybody who was here or watched may have noticed that a few of us wore "We Are One" shirts to support Septa's second "We Are One" week. As Community Relations Chair, I had hoped for everyone to be able to discuss their whys, which is also part of the "We Are One" campaign, during new business at the end of the meeting, but as we know, the meeting adjourned before, there was an opportunity for new or old business. So this week, during Special Education Week, we are here again wearing our shirts, or we have them with us because it's really hot up here, so, to support Special Education Week and "We Are One." My why, and when I'm through, I invite any other Board member to discuss their why. My why, or what "We Are One" means to me. I, like some of my colleagues up here, have spent many years volunteering in this district and have always, as I do now, advocate for all of our students. I truly believe that we are one in this district. We are all human beings regardless of how we look, and a child or a student in this district is a child of ours regardless of their differences. I have seen the best of this district, the best of this town, and I'm hoping we can get back there again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kelly. Do we have any other whys? Would anyone else like to share their why? Mrs. Burns?
So I stole this quote from Avatar, the Last Airbender, and it says, "The greatest illusion of this world is the illusion of separation. Things you think are separate and different are actually one and the same. We are all one people, but we live as divided." And that's where the quote ends, and what that says to me is that we are always looking at each other differently, looking at each other as separate, but we have a lot more in common than we do, than we do differences. So that's what "We Are One" means to me.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to share? Okay, I'll go. Go ahead, no, you go. Okay, thank you. So for me, my ask, my why is, in addition to what Mrs. Kelly said, I was a paraprofessional for about two and a half years, and I, I had a lot of different students with very different abilities, and my why are those children that I worked with for two and a half years. I started in a, in a first-grade gen ed class as a one-on-one para, and there were challenges, specific challenges there. Moved on to self-contained rooms with different amounts of children, and what I can, first of all, I hold those, all, every single one of those children are in my heart right now. I hold them in there, and I, what amazed me and still does amaze me about all of them is that even with the disabilities that they had, they had their own very unique strengths and what made them unique and special in their way. And, and, and just knowing that and having that experience with those children and seeing other children in the rooms that I was not in, and seeing what they can do and what they can accomplish when given the proper guidance and the proper encouragement, it's just amazing to me. And so those students that I worked with directly and touched me directly, that I carry with, in my heart, that's my why. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sidedino.
Thank you. So for me, my why goes back to the beginning of becoming an educator. I began my career working in Elizabeth, New Jersey. My school was directly across the street from a very low-income housing project where the students who I did an after-school program with would often need me to walk them home just because, you know, of the community is sometimes unsafe for them to get home. And, you know, being in a community like that, I remember, you know, even going up to some of their doors and if they weren't there, bringing them the resources or the snacks that we had after school, just to make sure they had those at night. And sometimes I found kids sleeping in a closet, that was their bedroom, or not having clean clothes for more than two days of the week, and I said, you know, "I have to keep at this until we can address the needs of students and to find, you know, something that can, or provide a service for them that can, you know, lift them up and give everyone an equal footing." And when I landed here in Old Bridge, I found a community that believes in that, and that's why I continue to do this job, and that is my why.
Okay. Would anyone else like to share? Caro?
So I believe that we can all be successful, our students, our staff, and our parents. We just have to come together, and instead of pushing each other down, we have to bring each other up and respect each other's strengths and weaknesses and just continue to work together.
Thank you, Dr. Hoker. And Mrs. Alice Foster?
All right, thank you. Those are all good ones, and I wasn't actually really kind of prepared for it. So I think, you know, my why is seeing our children succeed, and I, one of the wonderful things I think about this community, and especially the parent leaders, is that we look at our children not for what they, some people will look like they don't have, but what they have and they bring to us. And I think every, every one of our children has a superpower, and discovering it is wonderful, and seeing it all is, just makes us wonderful. So, yeah, I know you all be, if I didn't cry, it would not be the same, so. But thank you, everyone who make sure we look at our children that way, and you make sure we are, we are one, and you push us to be better at that, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alice Foster.
That's why I always want to speak before her, because if she starts, then I'll get emotional.
I know, exactly.
I'd like to thank Septa for the tissues. That was very sweet of you.
Anyone else? Okay. Does anyone have any other new business?
Just, I want to just thank all of our contributors tonight, all our speakers. It's nice to have the discourse, the questions and everything, but also have people supporting what's going on in our schools and supporting our amazing staff that's doing such a great job. So thank you, everyone who came to speak tonight.
Yes, thank you all very much, very much appreciated.
Oh, but I have a new business. I have new business.
Mr. Giordano?
Okay, so I too am glad, last weekend, this week, that all the parents are coming up and voicing their concerns, and that's my, we are one, that we all could come together and express our opinions and try to answer them to the best of our ability. And when it comes to the guidelines, as Mr. Sidedino says, we are under the boot of the governor, so some things are not totally in our control, so if that's something that people would want to change, that's another opportunity they'll have in November to decide. And when it comes to senior activities, I don't believe it's necessary that they should have to have a forced vaccination or test for them to be, to participate in those school activities. We should give people the choice on what they think is the best route for them, and like, most people have had the chance to get the vaccine. I think half of the adults in Jersey have had them, so that's a good milestone we have. And for everyone at home and here, do the right thing, have a good diet, exercise daily, and be kind to everyone. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing, no, I, do we have a, we have an executive? Seeing, no, I, do we have a, we have an executive session?
You do.
We do. So where are we? So just motion to go and?
You need a motion for executive session for, we have a lot, we've been waiting. We have personnel negotiations and attorney-client privilege issues to discuss.
Okay, so I'm going, that concludes this portion of the meeting. I'm going to ask for a motion for us to go into executive session. May I have a motion, please?
Dunn will make a motion to go into executive session as described, as delineated by Mr. Parton.
And Mr. Weber, second. Okay, well, do we need, we don't need to?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Okay, and so there will be no further public portion of the meeting. We will be adjourning the full meeting from executive session. So thank you all for coming, very much appreciated. Thank you. And thank you for the hand sanitizer.